I thought you got the brakes going.
No, no, no. I'm trying to get it on.
Yeah. Hopefully six months next month. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's a secret. You're secret. Well, no. I guess he knows I'm sorry. You get two for the price of that. That just says okay. Yeah. Buy that one.
Yeah, I can't afford to eat. I'm making them. I like what I have. Do you like it? No. I don't know. They bring you your expression. Right now, like, right now. So, yeah. I don't even think they have the castle.
Yeah. Work it.
I've got prison work.
All you do is work. I'm telling you. I'm telling you more than anything. About it. I've been back from work. My baby's.
That was it. So, every time I go to castle, I get a lot of it. What brings that to be there? What brings you guys out here?
Yeah.
It's getting cut out, right?
Oh, yeah.
But they take steak and just enjoy the meal.
Oh, you can order a little with that one. Yes. For all get a chaperone like two weeks ago. About that one, four, six bucks. Came down from, like, Delhaye here that's horrible. There was a seven, six, that's about like four or five. And then there's the.
I don't know. She canceled his trailer. I see you have all.
One of the told us, I think they had like.
No, I saw you. I saw you. I saw you.
Yeah.
I saw you.
Yeah.
I saw you.
Is the price?
We paid you too.
The road is cool.
He's not saying.
Yeah.
Any other day, I'm a bad little sir. I'm sorry, Billy. It's a word for Twitter.
My partner told me.
Yeah. Yeah, I say, yeah.
You didn't play for keeping that up.
I just happen to be driving on soil. What are you doing in that?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting, October seventeen, twenty twenty-three, at seven ten P. M. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Mann. Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Councilman, Mayor Portem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Mann is not in attendance.
Thank you. Close session announcements.
No reportable action at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to see items on the consent, or do I wait for consent? Sorry. But item number five and seven.
It's that under the consent agenda, so can we just, can we hold on on that and then?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other, no changes to the agenda, citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address city council on any item, not on the agenda and items on the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please state that item number. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. Is there any citizen comments on the phone? In the chamber? Is, is this citizen comment to a specific item on the agenda?
I was trying to find it on the agenda, but I don't know if they postponed it.
Okay.
Number nine.
I believe he's referring to the green zone.
Okay, to the green zone?
Yeah.
Okay. You can speak now, or you can wait until the item comes up. It's your choice.
Oh, I'm glad.
Okay, sure. It's, it's up to you.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor Moran and City Council. Chris Don Santos here this evening, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. The congressman is glad to have the opportunity to speak with Dennis Wells and members of Livingston VFW Post eighty-three twenty-seven and other local veterans at Castle Air Museum's Open Cockpit Day this weekend. And this Sunday, our office was able to join Supervisors Espinoza and Pedroso, Mayor Moran and Mayor Portem Samra, and Councilmembers Mann and Roth as we took part in the Nagarkirtan Celebration with the Livingston Sikh Community. Our office would like to thank the Guru Nanak Sikh Mission and the Gurdwara Sahib Livingston Congregations for their overwhelmingly warm hospitality. The food was truly spectacular. And I would like to personally express my gratitude to Mayor Portem Samra and Councilmember Mann for enlightening me and providing insight into the importance of the Sikh ceremonies and traditions I was witnessing. I left the festival truly touched by this beautiful expression of faith. Our beloved District Director, Mr. Sam Sammers, of Indian descent, and started his decades-long career of service right here in Livingston. And our Chief of Staff, Mr. Rajan Nathaniels, from the Fiji Indian Community. Countless Indian Americans serve our nation in law enforcement, business, medicine, and other industries, and we thank them. Congressman Duarte was proud to vote for a bipartisan continuing resolution to prevent a government shutdown and keep the government open for the American people. Regardless of the events that have taken place in the House since that vote, he will continue his efforts to get the House back to work to do the job the American people elected them to do. From passing fiscally responsible appropriations bills to standing by our friends when they need us the most. In this time of peril in the Middle East, Congressman Duarte would like to also unequivocally affirm his support for Israel, one of our closest allies. Congressman Duarte strongly condemns the campaign of terror being waged by Hamas against the State of Israel, and the congressman is proud to stand with the Israeli people as they defend themselves from these cowardly, hateful, horrific acts of evil. At last count, at least thirty Americans have been killed and fourteen hundred Israelis murdered, and hundreds of Israeli civilians have been taken captive by Hamas, owing with an unknown number of American hostages. At the beginning of this meeting, we observed a moment of silence for first responders and our military, and as we speak tonight, thousands of American sailors and Marines in the USS Gerald R. Ford and USS Dwight D. Eisenhower carrier strike groups are taking up to turn positions in the Eastern Mediterranean. So I hope I can speak for everyone in this chamber when I say that we are praying for the safety of our troops, we are praying for the safety of civilians, and we are praying for the safe return of every single hostage. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Any, anybody else? Any citizen comments in the chamber? Okay. Seeing none, moving forward with awards and presentations. Item number one, presentation by Imeow Moran, Proclamation Recognizing National Breast Cancer Awareness. Cyril Livingston, and the proclamation reads, Cyril Livingston, Proclamation, whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas one in eight American women is diagnosed with breast cancer at some point in her life, and whereas breast cancer is the most commonly recognized cancer among women in the nation, and whereas one woman will be diagnosed with breast cancer every two minutes, and one, and one woman will die of breast cancer every thirteen minutes in the United States. And whereas every woman is a risk for, for breast cancer, even if she has no family history or other risk factors of the disease, and whereas early detection can be extremely effective tool. Timely screening mammograms could prevent twenty-five percent of all deaths from breast cancer in women over age forty, and whereas ninety-eight percent of all breast cancer patients survive when the disease is detected early, and there are over two-point-nine million breast cancer survivors in the United States, and whereas October is designated as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas community organizers, organizations, churches, and work sites can play a special role in educating members or employees about breast cancer. Now, therefore, that we, Mayor Moran, Josea Moran, and the Livingston City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In witness thereof, this October seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Counsel, any words?
Thank you for that presentation. I'd also like to point out that Ms. Sandra Betchart and her husband Doug Betchart also coordinate the Livingston Relay for Life, so if there are any buddy in the community that would like to participate, donate, learn any more information on that, Sandra and Doug Betchart. And very importantly is that women remember to get your mammograms, to detect any signs of cancer as soon as possible, the sooner the better. And men are susceptible, susceptible too, so everybody, keep up on your health.
Thank you. Anybody else this time? Okay. Next item, item number two, presentation by Mayor Moran, Proclamation Recognizing National Domestic Violence Awareness. And the proclamation reads, whereas the month of October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, to recognize the progress and the important work that remains to be done toward preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families. And whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group of groups or people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affects men, women, children, and society as a whole. And now, therefore, that we, Mayor Josea Moran and the Livingston City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to actively participate in the efforts to end violence in our homes, in our schools, and in our communities. In witness thereof, I have sent my hand and cast the seal of the City of Livingston, California, to be affixed this seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty-three. Counsel? Anybody?
Again, thank you for that proclamation. Domestic violence isn't something that everybody wants to talk about or even want to share publicly, but those discussions need to be happening freely and openly so that more people can get help. Livingston has had several deaths within the past couple of weeks. One was a result of somebody needing help. So the sooner that we can provide services, health, mental health services to our communities, to our people, letting them know that they have safe places to go and to talk to, we can stop some of this violence that's, that's occurring. And reaching out to our young children, letting them know, giving them a voice. Safe havens. Everybody is susceptible, again, to domestic violence, women, children, men. Even I, on this dais back in April, was bullied, okay? Came here and blatantly accused and manipulated by our county supervisor. So, again, when we can discuss these items, prevent them, have people speak out on them, stop them. Okay? Not everybody wants to say something, but it's time to act on this so that we can stop what's happening in our communities, and it needs to start with adults, responsible adults, taking a stand against people that are harming our youth, our women, and some of our men. So again, thank you for bringing that to the council. I appreciate it, and I'm sure a lot of people, once they realize that they need to speak out, that they will, and we can start moving in a way that we can provide help to our citizens and to our community.
Thank you. Next, we have announcements and reports. Supervisor Rodrigo Espinoza.
Good evening, Council. I just want to say it was a great parade, and, and thanks to the mayor and, and also Mayor Portem for inviting me to the parade, the Sikh parade. It was very well attended, not just in March. They have another nice one, and I know they wanted to have another one, so it was a great event, and always, I wanted to pay my respects as well. I just want to say that, you know, I attended the East Side Measure V Regional Projects Committee, meeting along with the mayor, and I know that Livingston has some projects on there in the past, and also that we, I know that the city wanted to have more projects on there, but I guess it wasn't approved by, by the whole committee, and hopefully next year we can, I think a couple of years, we can put, start pushing for a few more. I also attended the West Side Measure V Regional Projects Committee, which was over there in Los Bannels, on the same night as, as the city counted there. So, you know, they have their own projects on the site. Now, I, I cover all the way to Santanella, so I was added to the West Side as well, so. Today, we had a board meeting, and I just want to say that we also will be, we, the board approved a new MAC committee for Santanella, when I'm going to be representing Santanella, so they added three board members, so I got to add two more to that. Also, I voted against the sheriff's administration building due to the fact that.
And as we speak tonight, thousands of American sailors and Marines in the USS Gerald R. Ford and USS Dwight D. Eisenhower carrier strike groups are taking up to turn positions in the eastern Mediterranean. So I hope I can speak for everyone in this chamber when I say that we are praying for the safety of our troops, we are praying for the safety of civilians, and we are praying for the safe return of every single hostage. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Any, anybody else? Any citizen comments in the chamber? Okay, scene nine, moving forward with awards and presentations. Item number one, presentation by Mayor Moran, proclamation recognizing national breast cancer awareness. City of Livingston, and the proclamation reads, City of Livingston proclamation, whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas one in eight American women is diagnosed with breast cancer at some point in her life, and whereas breast cancer is the most commonly recognized cancer among women in the nation, and whereas one woman will be diagnosed with breast cancer every two minutes, and one, and one woman will die of breast cancer every thirteen minutes in the United States. And whereas every woman is a risk for, for breast cancer, even if she has no family history or other risk factors of the disease, and whereas early detection can be extremely effective tool, timely screening mammograms could prevent twenty-five percent of all deaths from breast cancer in women over age forty, and whereas ninety-eight percent of all breast cancer patients survive when the disease is detected early, and there are over two-point-nine million breast cancer survivors in the United States, and whereas October is designated as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas community organizers, organizations, churches, and work sites can play a special role in educating members or employees about breast cancer. Now therefore that we, Mayor Moran, Josea Moran, and the Livingston City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, in witness thereof, this October seventeen, twenty-twenty-three. Counsel, any words?
Thank you for that presentation. I'd also like to point out that Ms. Sandra Betchart and her husband Doug Betchart also coordinate the Livingston Relay for Life, so if there are any buddy in the community that would like to participate, donate, learn any more information on that, Sandra and Doug Betchart. And very importantly is that women remember to get your mammograms, to detect any signs of cancer as soon as possible, the sooner the better, and men are susceptible, susceptible too, so everybody keep up on your health.
Thank you. Anybody else this time? Okay, next item, item number two, presentation by Mayor Moran, proclamation recognizing national domestic violence awareness. And the proclamation reads, whereas the month of October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, to recognize the progress and the important work that remains to be done toward preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families. And whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group of groups or people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affects men, women, children, and society as a whole. And now therefore that we, Mayor Josea Moran, and the Livingston City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to actively participate in the efforts to end violence in our homes, in our schools, and in our communities. In witness thereof, I have sent my hand and cause the seal of the City of Livingston, California, to be affixed this seventeenth day of October, twenty-twenty-three. Counsel, anybody?
Again, thank you for that proclamation. Domestic violence isn't something that everybody wants to talk about or even want to share publicly, but those discussions need to be happening freely and openly so that more people can get help. Livingston has had several deaths within the past couple of weeks. One was a result of somebody needing help. So the sooner that we can provide services, health, mental health services to our communities, to our people, letting them know that they have safe places to go and to talk to, we can stop some of this violence that's, that's occurring, and reaching out to our young children, letting them know, giving them a voice. Safe havens. Everybody is susceptible again to domestic violence, women, children, men. Even I, on this dais back in April, was bullied, okay? Came here and blatantly accused and manipulated by our county supervisor. So again, when we can discuss these items, prevent them, have people speak out on them, stop them. Okay? Not everybody wants to say something, but it's time to act on this so that we can stop what's happening in our communities, and it needs to start with adults, responsible adults, taking a stand against people that are harming our youth, our women, and some of our men. So again, thank you for bringing that to the council. I appreciate it, and I'm sure a lot of people, once they realize that they need to speak out, that they will, and we can start moving in a way that we can provide help to our citizens and to our community.
Thank you. Next, we have announcements and reports. Supervisor Rodrigo Espinoza.
Good evening, counsel. I just want to say it was a great parade, and, and thanks to the mayor, and also Mayor Potem for inviting me to the parade, the Sikh parade. It was very well attended, not just in March, they have another nice one, and I know they wanted to have another one, so it was a great event, and always, I wanted to pay my respects as well. I just want to say that, you know, I attended the East Side Measure V Regional Projects Committee, meeting along with the mayor, and I know that Livingston has some projects on there in the past, and also that we, I know that the city wanted to have more projects on there, but I guess it wasn't approved by, by the whole committee, and hopefully next year we can, I think a couple of years, we can start pushing for a few more. I also attended the West Side Measure V Regional Projects Committee, which was over there in Los Banals, on the same night as, as the city county dinner. So, you know, they have their own projects on the site. Now, I, I cover all the way to Santanella, so I was added to the West Side as well, so. Today, we had a board meeting, and I just want to say that we also will be, we, the board approved a new MAC committee for Santanella, when I'm going to be representing Santanella, so they added three board members, so I got to add two more to that. Also, I voted against the sheriff's administration building due to the fact that I said we need to be fully, physically responsible, and, which we all mentioned, right, and, but it was approved by, by the majority. I stated that, you know, we've been getting a lot of complaints from the unions, from employees, due to the fact that, you know, inflation, and, and, you know, of course, you know, people are barely making it with everything, it's so expensive, so we need to figure out, to make sure that we don't know too much, because I know currently we have a two million dollar debt service with regards to the provision department, two million dollars for the communications antennas, which is approved communication system for the whole county, and, and we're gonna install, be installing an AC system on the county, new county building, so in total we'll probably be paying around seven, eight million dollars in debt service every year, so that's pretty high. So I know we, I think our, our, we, we have about thirty-nine, forty-one million dollars, I can't remember, that we have in reserves, so that can go fast with inflation and the way everything costs. So I just wanted to, I stated that, like I said, I support the public safety and the Sheriff's Department, but right now with the looming recession, they say it's pretty bad, so I wanted to, you know, explain that we need to wait at least a few years to see how it is, but the majority of the board voted for it. Also voted against a castle lot that was sold for ninety-eight thousand dollars to an engineering company, and currently the lot is right in front of the, of the rundown, I mean, of the runway, right in front of the airport, whole airport, so I think that that should have been higher, but it was approved by the, by forty-one. I also mentioned that Peach Street was on the, the price for Peach Street, paving was on the agenda, and we approved it. I also stated to the board that that peach was, should have been fixed back in July, which they stated, you know, as I stated here, but it's been delayed, delayed, and so they just amended the price, and so hopefully it'll be done in November along with Magnolia and Dwight as well, on both sides of the freeway. Also, we're trying to get a revenue sharing agreement meeting. I know that we were trying to see if we could make it in on Saturday, but the CEO is not going to be here on Saturday, so hopefully whether, if any, the next coming Saturdays will work, so hopefully everybody can agree, and so we can start meeting on the revenue sharing agreement. We also voted to approve the, the VST, the Virginia Smith Trust Plan for thirty-nine-hundred homes just south of UC Merced, which will include about almost a hundred acres of park space and about fifteen acres of open space, a new fire department and a school, and apartments for the UC Merced, there's currently not enough apartments next to the UC. We also voted for, to approve the Bradbury Ranch Master Plan in Delhi, has two-hundred-seventy acres off of, right off of Shanks and Vincent and all the way to Bradbury, so that, that went ahead and it was approved, so, and that's all I have today, so. Any questions?
Counsel, are there any questions? So, this morning I, I received a message in regards to some garbage on the side of the road, but I haven't, on Dwight Way, they sent me some pictures, but I don't know on which side, if it's the county side or the city side, so I have to make some time, hopefully some time this week to go drive out there to see where it is, but if, if it's on the county side, I'll let you know.
Yeah, let me know, and I'll send it to.
If it's on the city side, I'll let you know too.
Yeah. Well, I, I also want to remember, you know, we're trying to finish Lincoln, you know, they, they were working on Bunker Road in Gustine, which is in my district now, so they finished all that one, but not, not Lincoln, so I know that Lincoln turned out very nice when they finished, you know, painting all the lines, and, but I think it's gonna, they ended up making it probably about six inches in thick, so as you can see, it was very, very high.
Yeah.
But I think that will last us for a long time here, for City of Livingston and the county.
All right, sounds good.
Right? Thank you.
Thank you. I see no city staff announcements and reports. And next, we have a city manager announcements and reports.
Thank you, Mayor. So what we will be doing is, we've got a whole series of announcements that'll be coming up in the near future with some of the staff, so you should be expecting some updates from the Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works in the next few meetings or so, so that should be coming. With that being said, want to provide a few updates, questions that we had come through our office in the last week. The first question related to the ACE train, as everybody knows, MCAG has approved funding for a transit center here in the city of Livingston. They have programmed funds for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five for the expenditure of those funds. We have reached out to the Rail Commission so that they could provide a formal update to the council and the rest of the community, and so we're aligning calendars to make sure that we have the right date for that event to occur. Their timelines have recently changed, so that project is being pushed out, and it's important to note, it's not the city of Livingston's project per se, but we will be working in tandem with that commission. Another item related to the Recplex, the item tonight related to the Grants Analyst, a part-time position. The hope is that that person would be tasked with identifying funds for the completion of the Recplex. As it stands, some of the preliminary construction estimates that we've received far exceed the amount that's been allocated to the city. So the hope is that the Grants Analyst will be reviewing and identifying potential opportunities to close the gap with the funding that's currently been identified. And then finally, really want to thank the mayor in particular, as well as the rest of the council, based on the efforts of lobbying by the members of the council and the mayor, we've been notified that we've been awarded a one million dollar grant from the state to address the TCP issues in our community. So we're coordinating ribbon cutting or a check presentation from the state senator's office to the city. Once that date's been finalized and coordinated, we'll make sure to have the council notified so that we can all be there, take pictures of the council receiving that check, and really celebrate that award. So kudos to the mayor and the council for the work in obtaining that grant. And then finally, we're continuing to move forward on the rest of the outstanding TCP projects that we have within the city. So what the council should expect in the community in the next few meetings, and then on a go-forward basis, is additional updates from the staff so that you all can be apprised as to what's going on in the community and what we're working forward, or working towards moving forward on in the future. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. And, you know, it's, it's this, this last few months, well, I don't know, we're in October now, wow. Last ten months, there has been a lot of work being done behind the scenes, and we're starting to see some of those results, you know, and we're glad to receive some funding, you know, it's been, it's been quite some time since we, we got anything coming our way, but even though we need a lot more than, a lot more money to fix a lot of the things that we need to fix, but, you know, if they can keep it coming, you know, one million at a time, we'll take it. And definitely, it's, it's, you know, I do appreciate the staff that works in the different state agency offices, you know, because they are the ones really up at the forefront, receiving the emails, receiving the calls, answering the calls, scheduling appointments, and making it possible for, for some of us to be able to go to their offices and, and have some time to talk to the congressman, to the senator, to the assembly member, and, and share our concerns and our needs, because if, if they don't, you know, if they don't know what our needs are, you know, it's just, nothing's gonna happen, but once we keep on reminding them, reminding them what our needs are and how much help we need, you know, eventually when something comes up, they'll hopefully remember us. So, thank you. Next, we have city council members announcements and reports. Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Mayor. For the last two weekends, or the last two Thursdays, I've been down to the street fair, which is very nice, I encourage anyone to go down there, but the museum that we have here in the city, a lot of history there. I've been in there a couple of times now, and I discover more and more about our city, and I think it's just important that our community members go in there on Sunday, I think it's open from two to four, and just see what it's about in there. Also, on the fifteenth, I walked on the Sikh parade, very good time as always. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Otto.
I, I did forward a survey for CalCities to our city manager, and hopefully he's pushed that out to the rest of the council. There will probably not be a LAFCO meeting, as they will be having their California LAFCO conference this week. Did attend the city-county dinner that was held in Las Bannas last week, great presentation from the Merced Fire. And Merced County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce will be having some upcoming town halls, and we did have a installation dinner of our new board members and some wards presented to businesses throughout the county. Also, November second will be the last Mercado of the year, so I encourage you, along with attending Livingston's own street fair, is to come check out downtown Merced, November second, it'll be the last Mercado that is held by the chamber for this coming year. And that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Mayor Potem Samra.
For me, just a couple of things. First, we had the mosquito abatement meeting today. Statistics show that the district is getting about thirty-five to thirty-eight percent more calls than the previous years, that's due to extra weather we had during the rain season, and also tomorrow, they will be spraying up and down the nine-nine corridor of the cities, that includes Livingston, Delhi, other cities near, near ninety-nine, they'll be spraying that. And then, other than that, I just want to thank the city, Public Works, the Police Department, our Sergeant Barkis did an excellent job of making sure everything goes smooth for everybody. All we had to do was enjoy the, enjoy the parade, and the city has always made sure that we didn't have anything else to worry about, so we are forever grateful to what the city does every year. And I do like to thank Christian, he was there, and our council that was there, and Supervisor Espinoza for being there. We appreciate the unity and showing the support for the community as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I was looking at my list, and I didn't think I was gonna, I was too busy, but I guess I was. So, I also did attend the Measure V Regional, the East Side Measure, Measure V Regional Committee meeting, and it's just basically a meeting within, with an MCAG where some of the needs of the city are presented, and then with actual figures, you know, how much it's going to cost to fix this, this road or the street and stuff like that, presented to the, to the committee, and then that way the committee can evaluate and approve or not the recommendation to, to the MCAG board. And for, for the most part, I think most of the items that were there for the City of Livingston were, were approved, so next it will be going to the actual board, to the entire board for MCAG, and I'll bring back more news when that happens. Last Saturday, I attended the Water Education for Latino elected officials in Visalia Water Summit. I've been attending this, the summits and conferences related to water for the last three years, and let me tell you, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of information and very difficult to understand, you know, not until this time I was able to understand a little bit more. It's like every time I attend those conferences, I'm able to understand something, something more, and, and, and part of the conversation was, even though we had a lot of water this year, you know, but we have to understand that, that we were in drought for, you know, at least five years, and then we don't know what's gonna happen next year, and we don't know what's gonna happen the next three or four, five years, and so on, but it's, it's good to get updates and also see how other agencies are dealing with similar issues like we are, and we get to learn from each other. So there's a few things that I, that I, that I learned about and that I shared with the city manager, and hopefully, you know, those could be some of the things that we can implement in the city of Livingston to be able to not only conserve water, but also save money for the residents and, and still keep services in full force for, for our community. Also, on Sunday, I mean, on Saturday actually, just, I had to really schedule myself to be at two places at the same time, most at the same time. So before going to Visalia, I was able to attend the Fresno Educational, Education Fair at Fresno State, early in the morning, you know, eight o'clock, early, and then from there I left to Visalia. So it's basically a, a, a big fair, a lot of information about education, specifically designed for, for parents and, and for students. It's, I always love attending those educational fairs. On Sunday, I also attended the Sikh Festival and Parade, and I just want to say thank you to all city staff and all different departments, and also to the PD Explorers, you know, they were the ones really handling the, a lot of the traffic out on the streets, you know. I don't know how many there are in the Explorers program, but there was like, I saw like fifteen, twenty kids out there, and, and, you know, it's, it's, they were always very helpful, so thank you to the Public Works, to PD, and to the Explorers, and everybody else that was involved and, and assisting in that event. Remember, every Thursday, and for the month of October, I think there's two more street fairs this week on Thursday, and then the following week. This week, I believe, is, is the Health Fair from five to nine P.M., Main Street, don't forget it. And I, I share some concerns in regards to some street cracks on the, on some residential area, and Public Works was able to go out there and, and work with the, with the, with the neighbors and the residents in that area and kind of patch it up a little bit as, as much as they could, you know, obviously, you know, it's, it's not the same as having the whole street repaired, but at least it's, it's, it's more smooth now than it was a few weeks ago, so thanks to Public Works, and, and thank you to the residents that are, that keep on, on letting, letting us know what their concerns are and what the area is, you know, because sometimes if we don't know what's going on, it's, it's hard for us to be everywhere in the city, so thank, thank you to the residents. And this weekend, for those of you that don't know who Fresno Skateboard Salvage is, it's this nonprofit organization based out of Fresno, and they basically collect old, broken, unused skateboards. If anybody has unused skateboards, let, contact me and let me know, and those old skateboards get donated, and they're refurbished, and then they are taken, there's art that is, they're painted, and art is created by students, by people in the community, and also by people that are being incarcerated. Then those skateboards that are painted are auctioned and sold to fundraise money. Then all of those funds that are fundraised are used to buy new skateboards, to be given away to kids all over the Central Valley, not only in Fresno, but, you know, here in Livingston and Merced. Just recently, about a week ago, there, there was a giveaway in Merced of, I think it was eighty-five or ninety skateboards. They always facilitate skateboards for our Sweet Potato Festival to be given away and so on, so they had an auction of the, the art for three, for three days, and I was able to help out with purchasing two of them, so it's just another way to kind of give back, and, you know, because they're always helping us, so it's just, I wanted to say thank you to everybody that gets involved in, in that organization. And, and thanks to the mosquito abatement, you know, this is the first year, I don't know if, I never paid attention before. if, I never paid attention before, but man, this year is like, they're even inside my house. You know, it's... But the good thing is, they seem to be not too agile to, I can kill most of them, but still, you know, they're... I don't know how they get inside the house, but that's all I noticed. There's a lot more mosquitoes.
You must have the weak mosquitoes, because they're pretty strong where I'm at.
Yeah, I don't know. But anyways, so... And that's it for me. Next, we have consent agenda items. Ms. Soto, this is... What items were you... You have questions on?
Five and seven.
Five and seven. Do you have questions, and you want to keep them there, or you want to pull them separately?
You can pull them.
Okay. So there's a request to pull items five and seven. So in the consent agenda, we have three, four, six, and eight. Counsel, what is your wish?
I made the motion to approve.
Okay, motion. I have a motion to approve by Mayor Potem Samra.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four-zero.
All right. Thank you. So next item, we have item number five, Resolution Autorizing the Interim City Manager to Execute an Agreement with Hanson Bridget L.L.P. for Specialized Legal Services. Yeah, question?
Actually, I have a concern. So in the last paragraph there, it says, "In reviewing previous council activities, determined that the city council had not formally approved an agreement with the firm. So in order to adhere to the municipal code, it is recommended that the council approve the agreement." So correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm reading and understanding, if there's a municipal code, and I'd like to know exactly what that says, what municipal code that we're citing here, is that an attorney was hired for the city of Livingston, but it didn't come to the council for approval. And that's concerning.
Councilmember, so in our process of always reviewing items and making sure that we're doing things properly, we've been focusing efforts on ensuring that any purchases above $10,000 go through the appropriate channels. This item in particular, I believe the city started working with this firm in September of 2022. In that time, there have been expenses accrued to this firm, and so we wanted to make sure that we were cleaning up any items that had not been to council previously. So that's the reason for this item coming before you. So currently, there is a requirement that any expenditure above $10,000 in the agreement does require council authorization. So it wasn't received previously. That's why this item is coming before you tonight, Councilmember.
And how much have we been billed for thus far? And how much work, and is that work acceptable?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. But we have not paid any of the invoices in the last few months or so because of this issue.
Maybe I can provide a little bit of background information on that. Just... So this particular item was presented, I don't know if you remember, but it was presented to... It was in discussion with the previous city manager, Vanessa Portillo, where the council gave her, the majority gave her permission to hire this attorney. But I'm assuming that since the amount has gone over 10,000, then that's why it's coming to the council. That's just a little bit of background information.
And one of the things the council should expect is that there are other items that are, that we're reviewing right now that we'll want to clean up and make sure that we have the proper approvals before we continue moving forward with items. For those that we've identified that have already exceeded that amount, that can be approved at the staff level, we've stopped those services. Any items that we continue to identify, we'll just bring back. So it is a cleanup item that we're working on currently.
Thank you for that explanation. On a go-forward basis, I, you know, being that this is attorney services, hiring somebody for less than $10,000 is, you know, a bargaining deal. So I don't... And I do remember the meeting that we did have, however, that without that dollar mark, I don't see... And I heard you say that we're not paying anything until we reach approval, but I'm concerned with the work that they've done for us. Is that something that is acceptable? Because they've been working with no contract in place, correct?
They have had an agreement in place. It was just that the previous management had approved that administratively without going through the council to approve that.
And I know, like, even Gopal had stated previously that he had a, you know, he had stated that things shouldn't be happening like this, you know, could have been made up, or things should be coming to council. And I get it. We're trying to clean up this item. So thank you for bringing that to our awareness and to the public, well, on this item. But thank you for trying to clean up everything, because that was one of my questions as well, as if this is being done, if work like this is being done without approval from the council, I was wondering what other things are happening. So if you've identified them, then I appreciate your work. I know that you have brought several things to our attention. But this is an item that was very concerning, so I just wanted to be able to have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions on the dais? So going off for public comment, is there any public comment in regards to item number five on the phone? Coming back to the chamber, any citizen comments on this item in the chamber? Seeing now, bringing it back to the dais, what is your wish? Is there a motion to...
Another, sorry, another question. If this is approved, then we start paying those invoices? Is that what this allows us to do?
That's correct.
Counsel, are there any other questions, motions?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor by Mayor Potem Samra, and a second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of three-one.
Thank you. Item number seven, Resolution Autorizing the Interim City Manager to Execute a Lease Agreement between Arkilian Farms and the city of Livingston. Ms. Soto?
So with this one, I was just looking at this, and I was recalling the agreement that came to us previously with the 5150. So there were some needed structural improvements that were needing to be done to that building before anyone could enter. And I was wondering, why isn't not the same for this one?
I don't recall any structural improvements. I do recall that 5150 was interested in making improvements that would, I think, fix some of... Yeah. And so in exchange of using the facility and not paying a rental fee for that, they were going to do some improvements that aren't necessary to store what this is going to accommodate. So that's the main difference that I can recall.
Thank you for that. Also, some of the wording, I know I had come across it, and I was trying to find I should have highlighted it, but there's a lot of ifs in the agreement. So for instance, it said, "If they're going to be using motorized whatever, whatever." Well, if it's going to be a packing shed, we know that they're going to have a forklift. There are going to be other vehicles in there. So I just kind of looked at that, said, "If they're going to be using this, and they need to purchase this amount of insurance." So when I'm reading that, and knowing what's going to, what kind of activities are going to be in the warehouse, it should just say, "Well, you need to purchase this amount of insurance," rather than saying "if." Does that make sense? Or am I the only one that makes sense?
I think those are good questions. I know that Legal reviewed this item, and there wasn't maybe the information related to every single piece of equipment that the mayor may not be using. So I think that provides some flexibility from the city side, so that in the event that they do have equipment that's specified here, that they do have to adhere to the standards that are included in the lease agreement. That's how I understand it to be.
Generally, we try to be as broad as possible. So as broad as possible, to try to cover as many possible items that could come in. And so we didn't want to narrow it to very specific types of machinery, in case there was something else that qualified that we would still want insurance for. So that's typically why we have the "if" provisions. And to, if they don't bring it in, then we don't want to force people to have insurance if they're not using that equipment.
But they will be.
It depends.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying. Without having a, at the lease preparation stage, a full plan on everything that they're going to use in there, we try to be as general as possible.
I believe the wording was really general. It didn't say specific to forklift. It said motorized vehicles, personal vehicles, public vehicles, whatnot. So I was just stuck on that word, saying "if." But we all know that they're going to be using that kind of equipment. Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions, motions?
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Can we go out for public comment?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Legal?
Good catch.
Is there any public citizen comments on item number seven out on the phone? Hearing now, coming to the chamber, any citizen comments? Bringing it back to the dais, is there a motion? There was a motion by...
I'll make the motion again.
Thank you. Motion by Mayor Potem Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four-one. Sorry, four-zero.
Thank you. Next, we have item number nine, Public Hearings. General Plan Amendment Application Number GPA 2020-1 to re-designate the general plan designation from Industrial Reserve, which is IR, to limited industrial LI. Tentative subdivision map application number TSM 2020-01, general industrial business park to subdivide a nineteen-point-eighty-seven acre parcel into twenty-two lots and a stormwater basin lot on property located on the west side of Bird Street, APN number 047-090-004, and the Green Zone Industrial Business Park, mitigated negative declaration. So earlier today, we did... We did receive a letter and request to postpone this item until December 5th. And what happened to my notes? I had my notes. Here they are. Thank you. See? I'm all prepared. So the applicant has requested to continue the item to December 5th, 2023. Are there any public comments on the continuance of this item? Any public comments on the phone? Any public comments in the chamber? Please step forward.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Eric Cabral, and I'm a fourth-generation farmer. And our property lines up fairly close to this zoning. There's a few things. I think we should definitely leave it reserved. I don't think the infrastructure is ready for that type of adjustment, nor do I think any of the neighbors are on board with it. That's just with the zoning part. The business is a whole nother level. I don't know if we care to talk about that, or if we have... Can we bring that up?
Sorry, not at this time. It is not specifically what we're looking at at this time. We're not looking at the actual potential business in that area.
Just zoning?
Just zoning at this time. That's what's before us.
Perfect. Well, we're against the zoning in that area and the lot adjustment. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification for the folks. I know this meeting, people, property owners were contacted by letters about the meeting. Will they be recontacted again through written mail for the December 5th?
Legal?
It's not required, but if the council wishes to direct staff to do so, they can.
I think that would be, yeah.
So right before us, well, there's a request to continue this item until December 5th. And we don't know what this council is going to decide, but just for clarification. All right. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Clarification has been noted. My name is Yolanda Correa. As you all know, I am one of the neighbors. And yes, we are very much against that zoning. We are very much against whatever the green park is taking over there, as we are the ones that are affected. I was told by Councilman Jason Roth that I would be contacted by the people, by several people, by the manager or the interim manager, that I would be contacted by other people here. And I never was. I just want you to know that nobody ever contacted me, and I don't think you have any intention to. So anyway, I don't think you guys really care about us at all. We have already made a lot of things. I'm not saying you as the city council, because it was just brought to you. But we came to the planning several times. We made our things heard. I know this is not the time. You will be addressing it later. I just want you to know that we will be here, and we would like you to hear us out. We would like you to pay attention to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber?
I don't know. My name's Paul. Thanks for letting me speak. But I don't know if this question can be answered here tonight, but I had a question for the project itself. Somewhere in the, in the, all the paperwork, which I've read through, it said something about sewer and water. Is that to be provided by the city to the project?
So if I understand correctly, there will be no presentation tonight related to this item. So if I understand correctly, the request from the mayor to take public comment would be to take public comment on the continuance of the item. There isn't any conversation that we're planning on having from the staff perspective if the council chooses to continue the item. That's as far as I understand it to be at this point.
Okay. I can ask that at the further meeting, because it does affect us, being we own property on both sides of Bird Street, and we also own property on Olive, both sides of Olive, and we get multiple people coming up Olive and then cutting through the back of our property now to go to Bird Street, to the meat market, as well as to the shooting range. And that's not public access through there. And I also... And I also had questions about that, but just for tonight, I just wanted to leave my request also that I am against the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any additional citizen comments regards to the continuation of this item? Okay, Sina, bringing it back to the dais. So counsel, I do believe you also have a copy of the letter requesting a continuation of this item until December 5th. I'm okay with continuing that until then.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion to continue this item until December 5th.
Okay, I will second that.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please? A motion by Mayor Moran and second by Mayor Protam. Roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Soto.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four, zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to the next item, I just want to make sure that we have a clear direction to the staff to notify each property, even though we may not be required, just for extra precaution, that we notify affected property owners through written correspondence, that they are aware of it. That way, we don't want to have somebody say, well, I didn't know. So just, just for extra precaution.
If the council chooses to provide that direction, I saw two head nods. Yep, I saw three.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to remind the public to come back on December 5th, because that's when the full consideration of the item will be had, so you can have further public comment on your specific concerns related to the project and ask questions at that time.
And, and then if there's other questions, well, I can always listen to people. I cannot always provide a response, but if you have specific questions that you want to be addressed or that you want to bring to my attention, send them to me, you know? The more, the better, you know? Because probably if you have a question, maybe there's somebody else out there watching and listening that they have a similar question, so, or unless, you know, and then you're also more than welcome to be here and, and ask the same questions. But once again, is, I might not always have the answers, or I might not always be able to respond at that time, because it's something that is coming before us and we cannot make a decision before we're here. But, but I'm always, I'll try to make some time, but if you email me, message me, text me, you know, that'll be okay with me. My, my number is on the website. If you need my business card, just, just ask me for my business card, and I, I don't have a problem, you know? I'm pumping gas and people talk to me and grocery shopping and people talk to me, so I'm okay. All right, thank you. Next item, number 10, discussion and potential action items. Designation of delegates for the, for the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG 2024 One Voice Trip.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item, the delegation, the One Voice delegation went to DC back in May of this year. Part of the feedback that was received from MCAG, from the participants, was that there was a request to start the planning process sooner rather than later. With that being said, at the technical review board meeting held last week, MCAG has put together a potential schedule with respect to having these conversations begin sooner rather than later. That discussion is scheduled to begin at the beginning of November. Actually, the items in terms of the council identifying its delegates are due to MCAG at the beginning of November. Shortly thereafter, there will be conversations to begin preparing for the trip in 2024, shortly thereafter. There should be MCAG Board of Directors discussion beginning any time now related to this schedule that's been proposed. So tonight, we are asking that the council identify its delegates for the One Voice Trip for 2024, so that we can provide our information to the MCAG Board. There is one small caveat, that after consulting with the city attorney, in order to avoid any potential Brown Act issues, it probably does make sense to have the director on the MCAG Board attend the One Voice delegation. That director is the mayor. With that being said, the other delegates, free for the council to decide who they choose to delegate for that trip. It is a pretty lengthy commitment. There are a number of in-person meetings, a number of role-playing activities that go on in preparation for that lobbying trip, and it is a pretty extensive commitment that's required. There are a series of prep meetings, discussions, a meeting with the lobbyists in preparation for that, and then the trip itself is a few days, and those are anywhere from 12 to 16-hour days. So there, there are some pretty long days spent lobbying on behalf of the region. So that concludes my report on this, Mayor. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I did have an opportunity to attend earlier this year, May this year. We, in two days, we had to be at, all together, probably to about 20-some different meetings in two days. So when Mr. Lopez was saying, there was like 12, 14, 16-hour days, you know, it's just running from one meeting to another, and, and that's besides all the other meetings prior to, in, in preparation to being out there, because, you know, it's like, really, I think we got three minutes each to really present our project and how much money we, we needed it. So you got to be able to sell the product in, in less than three minutes and really be convincing and, and, you know, especially when you're asking for $20 million or $15 million. So there's a lot of work, a lot of homework before to prepare for it. I learned a lot, and so let me tell you, the commitment has to be there, and even though there has been stories about people attending trips like this that end up, you know, skipping out and end up being at some baseball game or something like that, you know, that shouldn't be the case here. And, and, and I know that this is not going to be that case, but there's a big commitment, so if there's any people interested, I, I've been thinking about it, you know, it's just, it's just, I'm not sure if I can fulfill all of the meetings with, with, with my other engagements of going back to school, so it's either school or, or, I don't know. So anyways, questions?
No, but I think I would like to nominate Mr. Roth as one of the attendees.
Mr. Roth, what do you think?
Yes, I'd like to go.
I'm thinking.
Huh?
Yeah, and it has to be two, because, well, no more than two, because of possible-
Yeah, it was a recommendation, but I think let some of our newer members go this year.
Yeah.
So I would like to nominate JT Man as a secondary person.
Okay.
That's what he gets for not being here. He gets volunteered.
Well, he actually, he, he did, he did attend all of the trainings last, last time, every meeting, and it's just last, very last minute, he was not able to go up because of COVID, right before, like two days before we were to take off. So I think he already has the, the knowledge and that part of the training, and I'm sure that, that additional 10 days of training won't hurt him anyways. So I'll-
If I may, I would, I would like to attend as well, so being an alternate for MCAG and not having, I mean, the opportunity was there.
Are you the alternate for MCAG?
I was last year.
I thought I was.
I was previous to you.
Yeah.
So I didn't get the opportunity in the previous years to attend MCAG. They did have it. I know Juan did go, but somebody else went instead, so if the opportunities, if, if we're going to discuss this, I would also like an opportunity to go, because as part of council, I have not attended. So that would be a new experience for me. I do see that it is very time-intensive, and I'm up for it, because I do have the vested interest to get some lobbying done and, and learning how to go to the next level at the federal level to get what we need for our region.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Samra, was that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you repeat your motion again, please?
I nominate JT Man and Jason Roth as our delegates to the One Voice.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Soto.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four, zero.
And then, and then again, keep in mind that, so there's two people that are, have been selected, but we always need a backup, like last time. You know, it was last minute and, and, but it's always good to be able to participate and have an understanding of, of the part of the training and the meeting, so, so just FYI, just, it's always good to be in the loop and, and considered to be a backup, just in case something happens last minute. All right, next item, we have council directions on future agenda items. Counsel, anything at this time? All right, Sina.
Excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
So I did get another email from the Carnival people, so they are really wanting to know where we stand for the Fourth of July, so if, I, I, I know that there are other pressing issues, but if we're going to have a Fourth of July celebration, now's the time to discuss that and lock in a show.
Is that the same Carnival or different Carnival from the-
It would be Palm Hour. It's the previous organized that we used to, that we, that we have had for several years for the Fourth of July committee. It's not the one that you use for the Sweet Potato Festival.
Maybe if, if, and then again, I don't know, this is just a suggestion, if they forward that, or they, if they email recreation and, and the city manager, just, then again, I don't know. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud.
I believe what I had suggested in the last meeting is that we put together a, a committee of people that would want to organize and orchestrate the Fourth of July festivities, and I'm not sure if that would be something that, that Jackie would be willing to undertake. That's why we reached out to Julio Valdez as well.
Ms. Lopez, what was the last conversation that was had in regards to, because I know that one time Mr. Valdez was here, like, but was, was that conversation in regards to having a, an independent community, committee, or was that something in connection with the city?
I think the last time it was brought up, Julio was sitting right behind Kristan, and he gave the big head nod to say that he was interested in developing some sort of committee to take that on.
Okay, so, so does that mean that he was going to develop a committee and not the city, or in conjunction with the city?
What we can do is I'll reach out to Mr. Valdez and follow up and then agendize something accordingly, Mayor, if that's the pleasure.
Yeah, because otherwise, it just seems like we're not, nothing's getting done and, I mean, anyways, okay. All right, anything else? All right, Sina, we are to adjourn this meeting at 8:19. Thank you, good night, everyone.